Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the transcript of the public hearing held on June 5th, 2023.
So moved.
I am getting one.
Can I get a second?
No.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval of the minutes of the council meeting of July 24th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next, special reports, recognition of Michelle Harmel's service to Peters Township. Mr. Lauer?
Yes. Sure, well, Michelle, you don't get to sit there. You have to come up. You know, I've had the good fortune of working with lots of great people, and of course, one of those is Michelle Harmel. Michelle's been here for 17 years, and if you look at the Parks and Rec Department, both in terms of the facilities that have been improved or expanded upon since Michelle's here, it's really kind of remarkable. If you look at the programming that is offered, it's all a reflection of Michelle and her staff's effort, and it's everything from the Princess Ball to the Haunted Trail to the egg hop. You know, Michelle's last day was Friday, and in typical Michelle Harmel fashion, despite the fact that the day ended at 4:30, Michelle was setting up the screen for the movie that evening. Michelle's commitment to the community has been remarkable, and she's going to be missed. I can appreciate she's headed home, which is a wonderful thing for Michelle, and she certainly has a wonderful opportunity with her new employer, but I can't say enough about how much she has meant to the community, and I wish you well, Michelle.
Thank you. I just want to say it was a really hard decision to leave Peters Township after so many years, but, you know, I'm very excited about moving back close to my family, and I really appreciate everything that this community has done for me and for the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm going to miss everybody. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle. Thanks a lot. Okay, we will move on to audience comments. This is a part of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item.
Good evening. Peter Glasser, 143 Longview Drive. I will be making some comments on an agenda item a little later, but I wanted to offer a compliment to the township engineer and anyone else involved in the road project on Longview, and I didn't want these comments to come out of my time line up to the latter issue. The rebuilding of Longview was a complicated project that was very well managed. First, the part of the roadway was regulation pavement, but the old section was shot and shipped, so they're really dealing with two different roads. Second, even in the newer section, there's not been any material worked on it in 30 years, and it was badly deteriorated. Third, the old roadway was much narrower than that permitted today, and efforts to widen it even slightly were complicated by the presence of telephone poles and electric transmission towers which sit right up against the roadway on both sides. Fourth, Longview is a dead end with the eastern part of the street totally landlocked. Fifth, a turnaround was included in the construction. Sixth, the project was coupled with a water company replacing water lines and new storm sewers being put in, and if that was not enough, in the midst of all this construction, the power company sent its people in to cut down some trees deemed to be growing into the aerial right-of-way in the power lines. Nonetheless, the job was done beautifully ahead of schedule with great communications from both the township and the road contractor. I was particularly concerned about the timing of it, although I have, as you guys know, I have come in here many times asking for this to be rebuilt. It was a very important project. Unfortunately, this spring and summer was a time when I had to go in for a number of medical tests, and I had to have three cardiac surgeries, and I was very worried about being delayed getting out for any of these, and I got to tell you, there was nothing more we could possibly have asked from Mr. Zemitis or the road crew as far as accommodation. They had a glitch, the water company didn't know exactly where their own underground water lines were, and they broke them when they went in on one of them, but there is not much more we could possibly have expected of township personnel and road construction contractor, and I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Zemitis, who made an excellent choice in the gentlemanly appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Glasser.
It's been about a 20-year mission of yours, I believe.
My counsel. First of all, I thank the crew in the park and council, township for getting those deadly trees out in post haste, and thanks especially to Mr. Coaster.
You're welcome.
All right, tonight we're going to talk about cell towers. It was both a shock and a disappointment to see Peters Township lease land along with an easement and right-of-way inside Peterswood Park for a gigantic cell tower. And I don't know, is the projector working tonight, Ryan?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. He has it.
Okay. We have some pictures of that. There we go. Well, councils state in recent months that federal regulations prevent them from having any control to prevent or curtail the rapidly increasing population of 5G cell antennas within our township. Council certainly had the ability to protect and exclude Peterswood Park. Beyond all the negatives it places in a cell tower there, I marvel at the bargain basement lease terms outlined in the contract I obtained using a right-to-know request. Initially, Peters Township only gets $2,000 per month during year one under the initial five-year term with three automatic renewals, the total 20 years. While the social security cost of living adjustment increase for 2023 was 8.7%, the cell tower lease payment only increases 2% a year from the previous year. What a great deal for the mobile phone companies. The carrot at the end of the stick for adding this monstrosity to our premier public park was additional lighting for the football field, which already has four tall towers with full lighting arrays. So where was the need? The main cell tower beam aims directly at the upper playground, so if you look into cell towers, the way they project, you can see the upper playgrounds directly in line with the beam from that new cell tower. Maintenance of the new tower area along with monthly electric bills and repairs to those new lights will be the full responsibility of Peters Township. It will also be interesting to see how much bright light glares into neighborhoods in adjacent areas since the new lights will have to shine further outward due to the placement so far away from the football field. Our connected world's increasingly bombarded with invisible electromagnetic radiation from cell phones and wireless devices. Unfortunately, 5G will require more cell antennas closer together than its 4G predecessor. Ten-year study from '06 to 2015 was done in two German cities on about 700 trees that were in the radiation field of 65 mobile phone base stations. Turns out the damage to trees by mobile phone cell towers, or towers, usually starts on one side, extending to the whole tree over time. And I did email this to council, where you can see these pictures much more clearly. Finally, it's my sincere hope that Peters Township Council and Peters Township School District don't lease additional public lands for cell towers and antennas. While our school board may not have had any control over the installations, two new cell antennas were installed directly in front of Peters Township Middle School and Pleasant Valley Elementary. I've included those photos along with related ones on tree damage. So here's the work in front of Peter, you know, Peters Township High School now and Middle School. And you can see again, the strongest part of the beam is straight out, so it's shooting right for the high school building. Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Bruce, and I own the property at 137 Longview Drive. I agree with Peter Glasser that the work done was excellent, it was high grade, but I don't feel the work is done because now that the road is very wide, very smooth, the greatest speed of cars driving on it and vehicles is much greater. The east end of the Longview Drive where I live has a steep downhill and then a steep uphill. The cars are now, because the road is no longer irregular, it's no longer narrow, are going much faster, and it creates an issue for the people, elderly people like Pete that walk on it, people that walk their dogs on that street, older people who regularly use that for exercise, and children which are going to be required to walk on that street come in another two, three weeks because the school bus stops are on Churchill Road, Center Church Road, and on Willhaven. And so those kids have to walk on that street. It's much faster. I look for stop signs as noted in the engineering report. There are not stop sign, speed limit signs. There was only one speed limit sign in that whole plan. It's right down at the bottom of Longview Drive, high up on the bank next to Willhaven. And when you turn into the street, you're not looking up at this speed limit sign, you're looking to make sure you can get between the two bank on each side and go on up the street. So in my opinion, we don't need stop signs at the top of hill to slow people down. We need some other type of speed control to slow people down because they are driving much faster, and it's going to be a hazard for school students that have to walk there and for the older people that walk their dogs and use that street for exercise. It's a very unique place in the township in that it's a low-traffic street that people can go out and do that, but it's a wide, fast thoroughfare now, so to speak. They go faster, and I'm thinking they're going 10 to 15 miles an hour faster. I'm being personal, I own the house at the bottom of the street and the bottom of the dip, and they're going way faster past my house. And so I would like Mark, which I talked to the other day, I would like him to see something else done, to slow traffic down now that that road is so nice and so fast, and I'm doing that for safety reasons. So, and that's why I'm here. I would like to have something done to control speed on that road.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? Because I get the privilege of watching those kids grow up. I get the privilege of seeing those people walk out and down the street. I don't want something to happen to them. And Gateshead has lots of speed limit signs, and Center Church has lots of speed limit signs. There's nothing now along you, and those people are going a lot faster. Thank you.
Are we on Friday now?
No. It's one of the unfortunate things whenever you repave a street.
Do we have any speed counts on that road?
Well, you know, the thing, the answer is the road's just been paved, so we don't know what the speed is on the road. The fact of the matter is about Longview Drive, the only people on Longview Drive are the people who live on Longview Drive. It doesn't connect anywhere once you get past Joe Matt, so to the extent that people are speeding down Longview or out of Longview, it's going to be the residents. Now, can it be posted with speed limits? Yes. Can it be posted with watch children signs? Yes, but I'm not sure that we know that there's a problem yet.
Well, that's why I'm asking. Do we, you know, get any speed counts or anything like that?
Well, I think some of it may have to do with the residents being excited now that they actually have a street they can drive on, you know, sort of subconscious now.
You had built-in traffic calming because that street was so bad that it was difficult to drive.
Do you think we could put that thing down there that tells you how fast your car is going, little speed timing devices?
You, we could look at doing that, yes.
I mean, not forever, I'm just saying, just to maybe remind people that now that you have this nice road, don't kill anybody, slow down.
They are your neighbors.
Well, I would think once we address the full stop sign issue, we're going to discuss later, that probably has some impact on it.
You think God helps them? My kids all play hockey, they try to see how high they can get that thing they got. You may not get the intended result from that, so anyway, cell tower update. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Michelle, thank you for all your service. You've done a great job. To re-go over the Drew Drive cell tower, I think it was October of '22 when install started. November, Paul and the administration issued a stop work order on the co-vocation. A lot of things happened. People got up here and spoke. January 23rd, this council meeting, Diamond, two reps, AT&amp;T, Verizon, First Energy all sat here and listened to us. I think the consensus out of that meeting was, and Frank, you were instrumental, let's see what these people have to offer. Maybe they care. So January 24th, me, Mr. Murs, Mr. Van Lane, and my wife walked the property with Diamond. They admit issues, that it's not a good-looking outcome. Let's see what we can do. Melissa Cook then committed to updating us on 4/28, 6/15, and 7/28. I got the 4/28 update. There was no 6/15 update, I met with Paul, thank you, on June 30th. Have you had any more communication?
Spoke to Ms. Cook today. They have worked through a solution that's intended to address the cables that are exposed to understand exactly what that is by the end of the week.
All right, so they said they have something.
They have an engineered solution. Yes.
All right, well, that helps a lot. I'd like to see what that is. If it is not something, when we came in here before in that January 23rd meeting, everybody agreed painting this cable wasn't a solution, and they promised to come back with an elevated solution.
Yeah, and that's my understanding that we're going to get by the end of the week.
So paint is kind of, okay. All right. Well, I guess that kind of knocks about everything else off because now we just got to kind of wait and see what they say.
And as soon as I find out, I'll keep that.
Well, my problem with this is, and I emailed her in advance, so maybe that helped prompt something, but I'm like, there was a 6/15 that you said you never met it. There was a 7/28 update that you said you never met it. Mr. Coaster contacted them a few times. Did you ever get the courtesy of a reply? So I'm not real jubilant that there's going to be a great outcome.
But as I explained to you when we met, I have been, I'm not having been waiting for her to get a hold of me, I've been getting a hold of her, and I do believe that we're going to have the answer to this by this week.
And I do too. I just said I take people at their word. You tell me you're going to give me an update at 6/15 or 7/28. The president of council contacts you, you don't even give him the courtesy of a reply. I'm not confident. So I want to go to the next step if this doesn't work out. Mr. Smith, in November, December, January, February, I read the verbiage to you that Seth had in the plan. The Verizon scope of work, uninstall and reinstall the existing AT&amp;T transmission line. They clearly were out of scope on that. You didn't have time to review that to see if we had a statement to push a little leverage on them. I then emailed you, I phone called you. I got nothing back from you. If you had time to review this and feel a way of standing to push.
So you understand, the way I work, unfortunately, I can't respond to citizen inquiries without council's approval or the manager's approval.
Did you ask for that to say, hey?
I let them know that you had reached out to me, and I knew you were reaching out to council and to the staff themselves, so I would get reports from them. So they've not asked me to look directly into any of your inquiries.
Can I ask then, anybody here to start that process? You're an attorney, you're an attorney, do you give him permission to look into their own verbiage to see if they're out of scope? Because if you put leverage on them right now, that might be helpful.
But I think the prudent thing to do is, since the answer is only a couple days away, is to wait to see what that answer is. If council's unsatisfied with that answer, then you can look at whatever you want.
Well, I don't, I think it would behoove you to at least give your ducks a run beforehand. Why can you not instruct John to look into that to see, you know what, you're out of scope, and that could add extra leverage? Why can't you start that process now?
Is it out of scope, you're saying, with their contract or with their approval?
Seth has the, what they put, it's been put up here, we can put it up again, it's their own scope of work project.
All right, but look, if we're going to get an answer by the end of the week, I mean, John doesn't work for me, so if we instruct John to start now and we get an answer that we like from, you know.
All right, well, then I'll go to the next level of commitment then. We don't get an answer that we feel is a good answer. Do you feel that we can then set something on a calendar to say, hey, let's get John or you or Frank or whoever?
We'll put it on the next agenda, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I was going to say it's going to be on the next agenda.
So in two weeks, it'll be on.
This whole Drew Drive cell tower will be on the next agenda.
Yeah, because there's going to be a solution that's being proposed, given what's happened there, we're going to put that as an agenda item.
All right, thank you all.
Anybody else from the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business of which there is none, so we move into new business. First item in ordinance, amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 410, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 9, Stop Intersection.
So as was stated, since Longview Drive has been repaved, one of the things that's become obvious is a need to look at putting a stop sign at the intersection of Joe Matt and Longview. Let me see if I can get us to the part of this, maybe I can't.
And you just passed Joe Matt.
No, we've got to go down. He's going to go down, and it's going to take a while. But what you see is, when this eventually gets there, and it could take a minute or two to get there, is that when, there's a vertical curve on Longview that's very steep, and you can't see over top of it in either direction. This became more pronounced when the road was repaved because, in fact, you could move down that road much more quickly than you could have otherwise. When the road was unapproved, it was difficult to travel at any rate of speed on it, so he's going to turn on to this right now. The thing that I will agree is the work that Mark Zemitis did on this with assistance from Kyle has transformed that road into something that's more in line with what you see on residential streets. Prior to this, this was pretty much a cow path after you got to the top of the hill. But you're coming up right now on Joe Matt, and you're going to see that it's difficult to see over top of that right there. And when you're coming up from this, the other direction, and this car will turn around and do that, it's even more difficult. One of the great things, if you've ever been down Longview Drive, and again, as you can see, the only people past Joe Matt that use this street are going to be people on the street because it doesn't connect to anything else. But one of the great things is that Mark and Kyle were able to work with the homeowner at the end of the street and have a cul-de-sac put in on the street. Prior to that, you were either backing in or backing out if you were a public service vehicle, and as you can see, the road's aptly named as Longview, and it was a dangerous situation. So this cul-de-sac now exists where there was no way to turn around at the bottom of the hill. So as this goes back out, you're going to, again, you're going to see the top of the hill a little bit better in terms of the steepness of that grade and the inability to see over top of it for oncoming traffic, so.
What's that, the cul-de-sac diameter?
60 foot.
That's big enough for a school bus and a.
It's big enough to get vehicle, any vehicle around it.
School bus is one.
Yeah, it's going to be tight, but there'd never be a school bus down there.
There never would be.
Yeah. But even if it was a school bus, you could at least turn it back into it. See, right now, you can't see over top of that hill.
Well, and the other thing, now that the street is paved, people are assuming and realize that, you know, if you cut across Joe Matt and go down that way, you can avoid the intersection at Center Church and Willhaven, so this will probably become a shortcut for people at some point, so I think the stop sign probably is necessary.
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 890.
I think Mr. Glasser probably wants to speak before.
Sorry, I apologize, Mr. Glasser.
Okay. Again, Peter Glasser, 143 Longview. The peak of Longview, as you've seen, is a steeply sloping hill with basically no view of opposing traffic. I took a photo yesterday, asked staff to send it on, but that video was much better. The only way you can widen it at the top, I mean, you've got telephone poles and electrical transmission wires. It's very difficult, but it's a very dangerous spot. Some years back, we had a young driver who lived on the street who swerved left just before the peak of the hill, outbound, to avoid an obstacle on the road, then tried to swerve back to avoid a collision with oncoming traffic over the hill in the opposite direction. She wound up flipping her car right in front of the house at the peak of the hill, and when rescue personnel cut her out of the vehicle, her head was very close to the crushed roof of the vehicle. Fortunately, she was wearing a seatbelt. When we moved to Longview in 1979, and I'm going to disagree with Paul on one thing here, the only delivery vehicles we ever saw were when people bought big, heavy items like furniture or heavy appliances and didn't have a friend with a pickup truck, okay? Today, everyone, even us older folks, we have items routinely delivered that used to be routinely purchased in stores. As a result, we have frequent delivery truck traffic over that blind hill. The delivery drivers are unfamiliar with the lack of sight of oncoming traffic. Many of them only go up that route once or twice, maybe, and with the narrowness of the roadway, they are under, the delivery drivers are under enormous time pressure to make all their deliveries. I think everyone knows this. A lot of these guys are contract employees and not union employees anymore. They're beaten over the head by their employers to make all of their deliveries quickly, and this is just a fact of modern economic life. There is nothing that anyone in this room can do to change that fact. I personally think that's where a lot of the risk comes from, Paul. And what council can do to make it safer is to follow the recommendation of the township's Director of Engineering and place stop signs around the peak of the hill, and I would urge you to do so. Had we had a bit more notice, and I won't fault anybody for this, we would have had a number of other people coming in here had it not been in the middle of summer, had we had, we had a few days' notice of this meeting. I will tell you, the vast majority of people on the street that I have talked to, and I've talked to most of them, are very much in favor of this, okay? With all due respect to Bruce, he doesn't actually live on the street, he owns investment property on the street. He doesn't have to get out every day. He's got a home somewhere else. The people who live there and are landlocked by this are overwhelmingly in favor. But I'm going to tell you, even if you don't buy my argument that this is mostly delivery truck drivers who are unfamiliar with the road, and look, I'm a retired accountant, I don't have a lot of standing to make these statements other than my own personal observation. But I'd like to remind you, you have a highly qualified and highly competent roadway safety engineer who has made these recommendations. He has a vast amount of experience, and not calling you old, he's got a vast amount of experience.
Not me, anyway.
He is your expert. He's not an expert we on Longview hired and brought in to persuade you. He's the guy you put your faith into, and I think it's well-placed faith based on everything I've seen him do since he's been here. You put your faith into him, and he's your safety guy, and he's recommending this. I cannot imagine why you would not want to follow his recommendation. And I would suggest one consideration, if it fits within professional standards in your business, and I don't know if it does or not. If it does, if you place the outbound stop sign just below the driveway of the property owners right at the top of the hill, this will allow them to leave their driveway without having to immediately stop. And realistically, the people at the top of the hill, I mean, how much speed can you gain in a few feet from the end of the driveway at the top of the hill, even if you wanted to? And they're not the safety issue. The safety issue is the people coming on to deliver who are under economic time pressure. The safety issue is the people coming on to deliver who are under economic time pressure. Um, but if you, if you can and you put that stop sign below the driveway, maybe you'll, you know, inconvenience them a little bit less. Um, and again, if you're not gonna do this, we have stop signs in this town that have been thrown up by previous councils over the years right in the middle of, of through roads, just to slow people down, which is not, as I'm sure you guys realize, not a lawful use of a township putting a stop sign in, okay? This is one place where we have a genuine sight issue. It fits the standards, as I've read them, the state level for a stop sign. You have your recommendation of your highly competent engineer, um, I can't imagine why you wouldn't wanna do this, I really can't. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wanna speak on this issue?
I agree with what Peter says. I, I have had experiences in the wintertime where you can't get up the hill. If you put a stop sign below the driveway, which you almost have to do because the guy's gotta get in and out, you're not gonna be able to get out in the wintertime because road crews, no matter how good they are, they can't get everywhere. That being, being an old, unimproved, basically, road, they didn't get that first. They always went to other streets. They're gonna have to change their schedule so it's solid and plowed, otherwise people won't be able to get out, and it's very steep at the top of the hill.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ty Kegarice, and as Mr. Glasser alluded to, I'm the resident that lives at the top of the hill on Longview Drive, right where the proposed stop sign is proposing to be erected. Uh, personally, I stand against the stop sign placement there. I, while I don't disagree with the traffic engineer's, um, study on the sightline distance, I don't believe that should be the only factor when considering the placement of a stop sign. I've lived in that house for seven years, I've never seen a crash at that intersection. Um, I know Mr. Glasser alluded to one, and I'm not contesting that in any way. Um, the only crashes that have occurred there have been ones that have actually struck or damaged my property. Um, on that side, and I do wanna thank you again for all your help with the incident that occurred in my house during the construction. Um, a couple of things, again, like I said, I'm not a traffic engineer, I do have experience in monitoring stop signs and viewing that thing, as I've been a police officer for ten years in a neighboring community. Um, for personal reasons, the noise associated with the stop sign being erected directly in front of my house with tires squealing a day like today where it's slick outside, tires trying to gain traction on, on the wet asphalt, as well as the sudden stop for people that are gonna be surprised by it, both coming up and down that hill there. Um, additionally, depending on where the stop sign is erected, it is either gonna be placed on a hill where the vehicle's coming from the westbound or landlocked side, having to stop at the hill, or it's going to be placed directly in front of my driveway, which obviously might cause an issue for me as well. Um, one thing, uh, that I would like to have considered is just to have some sort of study done, um, or research done on, one, the traffic volume, the speed of the roadway, and then any sort of crash data before making a decision based off of sight distance alone. Um, as we know, that's not a, the, the only contributing factor when it comes to crashes are speed. Um, and again, with the widening of the roadway, I think that alleviates the concern that is there for the crash that may have happened there in the past. Furthermore, traffic that is coming on Joe Matt to either turn left or right onto Longview has a clear sight distance down that hill for traffic coming up, and they can clearly see to the left, too. So if a stop sign needs to be placed, I don't see the need for the intersection to be a three-way stop, maybe just a two-way where traffic that comes up from Willhaven or the Sunridge area where they stop, and then that allows traffic to flow freely from up the hill. And I do agree with the assessment as well that the primary, the, the primary violators of the speeding are gonna be the residents that live down at the end of the street. There are certainly delivery vehicles that I see regularly that do the same, but overall, the overwhelming amount of traffic that's gonna be on that roadway where there are gonna be speed problems are gonna be from the residents that live down there. So that's just, uh, all I have to say about that. Um, I would just like to see if a study done or some sort of enforcement by the police or a traffic volume or speed issue, um, that can be looked at to see if it actually warrants that stop sign being placed there outside of just sightline problems. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I have a question for you, sir. Yes? Are you for the stop sign but just a particular location?
I would get some entirely, but if there, if one needs to be put up, if it's an absolute must, I would not be opposed to one being placed just on that eastern side coming west onto the landlocked side.
There is currently one on Joe Matt, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So Mark, this, this isn't really being done arbitrarily, right? It meets all the PENDOT standard warrants for stop sign placement, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the warrant it meets is sight distance. Due to that sharp vertical curve there, when you're at Joe Matt, you just can't see left over the hill, and same thing when you're coming from the dead end side, you can't see up over the hill.
And, and that's all PENDOT would require, is just that one?
Correct.
Can, can the stop sign be placed so that this guy can get in and out of his driveway? Would there still be sight distance, even if it's the top of the, the car?
I think it can. Ty, when you're coming up from the cul-de-sac side, are you asking for the stop sign to be replaced on the Route 19 side of your driveway?
Yeah, uh, well, honestly, any stop sign placed there is gonna be an inconvenience to me in my property, which, again, I know that's not the decision factor for the entire township, and I don't want it to be. Uh, but I feel if that stop sign is pulled back prior to my driveway, more on the western side, then you might still have an issue with seeing vehicles at the top of the hills or stopped, opposite of Joe Matt coming westbound, like Trump's on-
So just to be clear, what you're saying is, on, on the Route 19 side of your driveway?
Yes.
'Cause that's, personally, when I went out and looked at it, that's where I think it should go.
Yes, I would not object to that stop sign there. You can see it from a greater distance coming up the hill, it kind of flattened out there, it's a more gradual grade, and if traffic is stopped there freely, they have the time that allows traffic coming up the hill to turn or go straight, whatever issue they might have.
Because I think you're gonna be able to see people-
Correct, yes.
Can you put the visual back on? Like, just in that area, or?
It's, I guess-
Is that it right there?
Yeah, Joe Matt would be to the left of the rest of the building. So that, that, I think, should stay free with no stop sign, and then stop sign on the opposite side, as if you were coming down the hill. You've got the stop marker coming-
The thing that we can do is, if in fact council authorizes this, we can work with the neighbors in terms of those placements, as long as those placements are in conformance with PENDOT standards for, for the location and the stop markers, and that, that's not a problem. That's one thing that Mark has done just a wonderful job out there, is working with people, because this has taken a lot of, of discussion with various people, and you're particularly case the, the misery of that pole and everything else, so.
Yes. Did, did we change the configuration of this road and the slope? So this intersection's been here for a long-
It's warranted a stop sign forever, it just never, I guess, like Paul was saying, it never really came to light until you had the newly paved road and could see how-
The way the road was before, you couldn't drive-
We didn't change the John.
You couldn't go very fast.
I mean, yeah, friends grew up on that road, but, you know, I just don't know why it took until now to say we need stop signs.
I think, one, because the road's been repaved, and, two, it's caused us to take a look at, at what's out there, and, and when Mark and I saw that condition, that's why we asked the traffic engineer to take a look at it, to tell us whether or not it's a problem and whether or not it warrants stop signs. I think the problem is, you've got a, you've got a memo there telling you from the traffic engineer that you have a sight distance problem, and I think it needs to be addressed based upon that recommendation.
And in addition, you can add, like, uh, uh, signs for the miles per hour or whatever?
Yeah. We can, we can put up speed limit signs, but, but again, the nature of the road is such that it's, it's the people that live in the, along the street, that's not a problem.
Is there a no outlet sign up there?
I believe there is. I believe there is a no outlet sign at the top of the hill.
I'm gonna make a recommendation that we adopt ordinance 894 amending the Peters Township Code of Ordinance as Chapter 4, titled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 9 Stop Intersection, so as to create always stop control intersection at the intersection of Longview Drive and Joe Matt Drive, subject to, uh, placement of the stop signs after consultation with the township's traffic engineer and the landowners and the township engineer.
Motion, a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer, next item, resolution amending the Parks and Recreation Policy Manual with regard to sports association policies and procedures.
So with the July 20th, uh, meeting of the Park and Rec Board, the board reviewed the sports association's policies and procedures in regard to the warning, uh, wording of the bylaws under the required document section. So the current language says that all deletion, all additions, deletions, or changes made by the association bylaws must be approved by the Park and Recreation Board. The reality is, that's not what has, has occurred, but rather, the revised language actu- actually reflects what the prac- practices. Sports associations review their own bylaws and approve them. What the Park and Rec Board does is review them and make sure that they're in compliance with the township's policies and procedures. And so what this, this change is attempting to do is to have the policy reflect what the actual practice is. And I don't think the Park and Rec Board, quite frankly, is in, in a position to be approving, uh, bylaws for independent organizations that are under their, under their, their governance, so. So it's my recommendation that council approve our resolution 8123, which amends the Park and Rec, uh, policy manual with regard to sports association's policies and procedures. So I ask Michelle to hang around long enough if you have a question about that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, a discussion, on favor, say aye. Both say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer, next item, award of a contract for HVAC design at the Community Recreation Center.
The 2024 budget includes an appropriation of $50,000 to design a replacement for the HVAC systems at the Community Recreation Center. Uh, the township received five proposals, uh, there's a tally there of those proposals. Uh, this is a professional service, so, uh, while price is a factor, it's not the sole factor in the contract award, the qualifications of proven, proven performance of the firm is far more important. Uh, in the proposal submitted by Alan and Sheriff, they referenced only four project, HVAC projects that they have designed, and two of those have yet to be built. Um, Tower Engineering, which is the, the next lowest, is a firm that we have a lot of experience with. They were the original designers of the HVAC system at the Community Recreation Center. They most recently served as a subcontractor to the architect, uh, on the design of Fire Station 3. They also, um, worked successfully, uh, implemented, uh, updates to the HVAC system at the library in the municipal building. Um, it's somebody that we know and we work with well, and it's gonna be my recommendation that, uh, we award, uh, this professional services contract, uh, to Tower Engineering, uh, not to exceed $51,000.
Motion, a second, and discussion.
Yes.
You said the other emphatic, you said that emphatically, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, well, the situation is, what is the situation that we're attempting to remedy? Isn't it to replace and restore?
Yes.
The unit? Well, I think the most effective way to do that is to bring in two or three of our local HVAC contractors and have them assess the situation without incurring this engineering fee, and the selection would have to be based on, you know, a bid package this, this township would put out for the replacement of this unit.
Yeah, but the problem is that we're not capable in-house of designing a bid package that will allow for competitive bids, um, uh, for the replacement of this, um, and we do need a detailed bid package because, uh, the actual purchase of the equipment will be done on the basis of sealed bids on written specifications, and I, I don't know how to do that other than getting a engineering firm involved in doing that design.
Were they originally designed, back when they built the building?
Yeah, but-
And wouldn't the locations be exactly the same?
No, I, I would hope that the re-equipment that replaces what was put out there 20 years ago is going to be different and more efficient than what-
Well, it would be, but the, is where they go and how they're installed, that wouldn't change.
No, it's like timing. I mean, that's done universally, whether it be a public enterprise or not, uh, replace a unit of such and such a caliber.
Yeah, I, I would tend to disagree for several reasons. One, the way that building was designed versus the way it is used, the rooms and other things is entirely different. There are, you know, there's, there might be rooms that need additional ventilation that are not getting it, those are things an engineer can determine that we can't. You're also looking at including my, antimicrobial systems in this, um, I think you're looking possibly at, you know, you're not doing a one-for-one replacement of every single HVAC unit there, given the improved efficiency of rooftop units and other things, you'd be looking at much smaller units, if not fewer units. Um, and beyond that, you need to get a building permit for this, we don't have anyone on staff who can prepare mechanical drawing plans to, uh, replace this system. Uh, there's, I don't think there's any other way.
Well, a design-build mechanical contract package certainly could accomplish it, but-
Well, you know what, and, and we struggle with, 'cause we've talked about before about this concept of design-build, the, the problem we struggle with is how you do that in a, a public setting that requires competitive bidding. I, I don't know how, how you end up being able to, to accomplish that.
Right, anybody else have a comment? We have a motion, a second, on favor, say aye. Aye. Both say nay.
Nay.
Five two, Mr. Lauer, next item is award of a bid procured and placed pipelining for township storm sewers.
Mark, you wanna get through this?
Um, we opened bids two Fridays ago for, um, our typical annual cured and placed pipelining contract. Uh, this year, we have a system on Old Washington Road that needs lined and one on Joyce Drive that needs lined. Uh, they're old corrugated metal systems, they're original from the 50s, 60s when they were installed. Um, a little bitter on the project was Insight Pipe Contracting, we've worked with them several times, had successful projects with, with Insight Pipe, so I'm recommending that we award this bid to Insight Pipe Contracting in the amount of $116,197.50.
Motion, a second, and discussion, on favor, say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer, next item, request for two modifications from the Peters Township subdivision and land development ordinance on behalf of Equine Estates LLC relative to minimum radius of a cul-de-sac and creation of a new lot along a collector road.
So in, in the next item that's up is related, and it's the actual subdivision that, that follows, if in fact those modifications are, are given. So this is a sight map of, of this piece of property. Um, it, uh, extends from Thompsonville Road, which is that road at the, the bottom, it touches on Elizabeth Drive, which right now is another street, uh, that does not have, um, any way to turn around on it. Um, what's being requested is two things. Um, uh, on Elizabeth Drive, um, we're working with a developer to have a cul-de-sac installed. Uh, because of the nature of the property and, and, um, it is only possible to get a 60-foot cul-de-sac in here, so you'll still be able to turn around our public works vehicles, garbage trucks, I don't think there's any school buses that come down here. Um, and so, um, we're recommending that in fact, uh, that we authorize a departure from regulation to allow, uh, that cul-de-sac to be installed. The other, the other, uh, departure that's being requested is that on Thompsonville Road, it's a collector street, uh, you're not allowed to subdivide on a collector street, they're asking that, uh, they have the ability to have one lot on that road. The reason why you have this prohibition against subdividing on collector streets is to avoid a situation on a busy road where you have lots of, of driveways coming out, and it's also a, a question about sight distance. We asked our traffic engineer to review this request, they've made a determination that there's adequate sight distance coming off of this, of this property, and so, uh, the township staff feels there's no reason not to permit them, uh, to have that one lot come off of, of Thompsonville Road. So it's the staff's recommendation that in fact, um, uh, the departure's being granted.
How big, there's gonna be, so this is gonna create what, how many new lots? One, two, four new lots, right?
So one, this is an existing lot, this is an-
So one, this is an existing lot. This is an existing lot.
Okay.
One, really, three new lots. One, two, three. This is ten acre parcel that becomes four, so three new lots.
And there's always, I can't read it from here, what is the, what is going to remain, I guess, is the main parcel. How many acres is that?
Just, it's five acres.
So that in theory could still be subdivided in the future, right?
In theory.
Where, where's the, the main road?
Thompsonville's off to the right.
It's right there?
Yep.
And Elizabeth is where the cul-de-sac is.
And there's going to be three lots, five acre.
Five acre, I guess that's a half acre, that first one off Thompsonville.
This is a half acre, five acres. This is about 1.4. Each of these are around two plus acres.
And they're going to access that through?
Elizabeth off the cul-de-sac, we have a shared driveway.
Oh, so there's going to be one driveway that goes off the cul-de-sac that's going to, that's going to service.
This lot would have its own. These two would have a shared driveway off the end of the cul-de-sac.
And the five acres is going to come off of Thompson.
It already does.
It already does.
So they're just asking in Mr. Lot One.
Yes, Lot One's a modification and the other modification is the cul-de-sac diameter.
And we have a requirement in here that there'll be a maintenance agreement for the two lots off of Elizabeth Drive.
It's part of the subdivision plan.
Yeah. In fact, if you're talking about the subdivision, there's one of the things that needs to be incorporated into the motion. There were a number of conditions that were established or recommended by the planning commission. A number of those are still pending and the motion would be to approve it subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission.
I'm making motion to grant the request for modifications from Peter Sancho, Peter Sancho subdivision and land development ordinance Equine Estates LLC relative to minimum radius cul-de-sac and creation of a new lot along Collector Road and approved for recording purposes. Equine Estates LLC subdivision is shown, drawn and prepared by Harsham CD Group LLC dated May 24, 2023 for John and Ann Monroe, subject to the conditions established by planning commission out there in June 7, 2023 meeting.
Second. Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills, Dr. Barosko.
I've reviewed payrolls and bills, found them to be in good standing order, making motion to approve.
A second. Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. No correspondence tonight, Mr. Lauer?
Just, just to be, just to be clear, was there actually taken for the actual subdivision itself?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Sorry.
Joint motion.
Okay.
Anybody want to discuss any of the various board or committee or authority minutes? Okay, move on to miscellaneous. Recognition of Tom McMurray's service to the community, September 1, 2023.
So council's invited to participate in a commemoration of Mr. McMurray's service. Not only his service on the school board, but also his service as a director for, for the ambulance service. If you're interested in attending, there's an RSP that's required. And so I know the police department's going to be represented, the fire department, and it's my intention to be in that, so.
September 1st.
Yeah.
We'll make sure a few of us are there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, next discussion concerning upgrades of fields one and field two of Petersland Park.
Okay, we have now met with the baseball association a couple of times. We've met with the people that have been hired to design the, the lighting systems, the, the backstops and the synthetic turf. And kind of where we are based upon the available money, and again, just to refresh your memory, there's a $650,000 grant that has to be matched with $650,000. To be able to do a project that's in that vicinity, we can replace and upgrade the sports lighting on both fields. In fact, one of the things that I would ask is that we get permission to go out and actually get quotations for the purposes of awarding that bid now. It's going to be done through Co-Stars, but we could do the work over the winter when the fields aren't in use. It has nothing to do with the turfing. It can be done, you know, the, the switchgear for this is in the concession stand. So it can be done without any disruption to the field. The second item is the replacement of the press boxes and, and backstops on both fields. And then, then there's enough money to do the installation of the artificial turf on field two, the Little League field. So the way this grant works is it's a reimbursement grant. And we have to go through, even though the grant's been awarded to us, we have to go through an application process to get to the point that we can actually be reimbursed for these expenditures. That's going to take a little bit of time. But I, I, we're certainly in a position, we can move ahead with the sports lighting course of this and be able to fund that while we're waiting for those other things to be done. The other thing the baseball association wants to see is artificial turf on field one. And I think the, the consensus of everybody there was that, that we need to go out and see whether there's additional funds that'd be able to help us with this. So one of the things that has opened up, there's a local share account fund. You know, we normally apply for local share money at Washington County. Well, there's a statewide program. And we would like to bring back to you an application for council to authorize to pick up a significant portion of the funding for that project. And I think it might have reasonable expectation of being funded because baseball's associations, in part, they're interested in this, is not only for their own play, and they do have their own play on this field, but they also want to use it for the Pony League World Series to bring some of those games into our, our facility. The high school uses this field as well. And we think with those combined uses, it should make a strong grant application. The other thing that I would like to get direction from council is we have a number of projects that are coming up next year. The resurfacing of the tennis courts, that needs to be done. We, we not only use it, but it uses for high school play. This field one is not only used by the township, it's used by the high school for, for play. And I would like to get the school district to contribute. If we're going to look at doing pickleball courts, and I don't know whether we are or not, up at the high school, that's a high school facility and we should get the school district to help contribute. So if council permits it, I would like to draft a letter for Mr. Cozler or myself to sign to send to the school board and ask for consideration of providing partial funding for these projects as well, so.
Absolutely.
I agree.
What's the additional cost to turf the larger field?
700 and.
$32,000.
$50,000, is that it?
Uh, 733.
How much is the LSA grant?
It would, Ryan, you know that off the top of your head, we think it'd be a 50-50 match.
It's, it's, it's actually less than that. It's, we could, the, the proposal for this was that we would request 500,000 and then the remaining match would be split between the baseball association and the township.
That was my next.
For the LSA.
Has the baseball association agreed to?
Nothing yet.
But I, but having said that, having met with them, and again, we're talking to the president of the association. We're not talking to the, the entire board. He's, he's on board with that kind of approach. The other thing that, that Ryan and I think could help this a whole lot is, you know, the Washington County Chamber of Commerce is tied to Pony Baseball. And if we could even get a token contribution from, from the chamber, and the same thing with Pony Baseball. If we can get a token contribution for Pony Baseball, I think it would make that application really strong, so.
Isn't there a better use? We're going to need a use on the road for the LSA grant other than doing that.
For the state?
I mean, what do you, you know, the Pony World Series, you're going to play what, one game there or two games there? I mean, you're going, you're going to go through all that rigmarole when you could get maybe a half a million dollars from the state to do, to do the pickleball courts or refurbish the, the existing tennis courts?
I disagree though, because, I mean, the school uses it, all of those kids use it there. So many games that don't get to be played for the baseball season. And there's more than just, I mean, there's freshmen, JV, varsity for years and years and years. And I, I think that that, that money should be put towards that.
And Frank, the way we try to do this is try to look at the criteria that's in that grant and see what's the best way to pitch it to get grant money here. I think in this particular case, because of these other uses, we could get something that benefits the township. In terms of the local LSA money, the, the project that we're thinking about pitching to them is the pickleball courts down at, down at the high school. And again, if we can get the school district on board with that, I think it can make that application fairly strong for something that's local. I think with this LSA money coming out of the state, it has to have something that has a broader appeal than, than. And I think that field one does that, so I don't know.
I hope so, because the, the school district let the old high school fields go to waste, pretty much. And us rejuvenating that for pickleball would be helping the community. Plus also, I mean, if we didn't have our tennis courts resurfaced and maintained, their tennis team would have nowhere to play, both boys and girls, and that's kind of ridiculous. But I do have a question about the dugouts. Do backstops technically mean dugouts?
They're going to be dugouts and backstops, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we are in, is council okay going, well, you know, I guess we'll bring it back to you, but is, is it okay to, to look at doing the sports lighting work this winter as opposed to waiting?
I have a question though, sorry to keep on harping on this. Have you talked to the high school coaches or anything like that?
Yeah, Rocky.
Rocky?
Yeah, the high school coach was there.
Because they may have different needs there.
And it is part of these discussions.
Okay, good.
Okay, next item, zoning hearing board report. Anything to talk about now? Do we have any update on what we're going to do about the infamous urinal on Holly Drive?
It should have been removed. I sent a violation letter out. I got an email. I had not had a chance to double check, but I was told that it would be removed immediately.
Okay, can we just send somebody out to check?
Yeah, we will.
I'm sorry, I mean, the lady that came, Mrs. Patrica, emailed me this morning, wanted to know an update, so I didn't. I can understand why she wouldn't want to go out there.
She emailed you this, this morning for an update? Guessing it's still there. That it would still be there. If she asked you this morning, it's probably still there.
So that would be my thinking, but.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe it's going to come down and cover it. Listen, you know, I, I can understand.
As we're speaking, you might be out there.
Take it down, okay. But anything else under miscellaneous?
I have a couple other things. We actually have a few pieces of good news. We've got our hospital utilization renewal for this year. There'll be no increase in hospitalization costs. That's, that's a significant thing for the township, yeah, and it's, yeah, it's a pleasant surprise. The other thing, we've been notified by PennDOT and, and Mark and I are, are a little bit concerned, but PennDOT has told us they're going to replace all of the singles on Route 19. And so that, but is an expense that the township would have otherwise had to, had to go through. PennDOT's going to pick up. What has Mark and I concerned is we've worked with PennDOT on signal projects before. It's not a timely thing. So I don't know how long it's going to take them, but they're talking about the entire corridor. I think the other thing that that, that does is if there's ever a chance to get adaptive signals in, it's going to be when, when they go to replace all of those signals, which would be a great thing in, in Peters Township. You know, they have those adaptive signals in Murraysville and it's amazing how quickly traffic moves through that, that Route 22 corridor. And hopefully they can do the same thing here.
Paul, are they doing the black poles as well?
We're, we're, we're going to work on that. We've got black poles, we've got black poles up here at, at the intersection.
And the only correction I have to that, Paul, like the signal at Dam Road and the hospital, they're fairly new. So they, they were not scheduled for replacement, but put it, all the signals that should be replaced.
Okay.
Scheduled for replacement on 19. But as Paul said, it's, we're talking years. I mean, this is like a 2027 thing. So it's, it's going to be a while and hopefully nothing changes between now and then.
And one of the things we were told is they actually have money in place for this. Because often when they make a commitment, it's before the money's in place, but they're telling us the money's in place, so we'll see. We were notified of a $55,000 grant. I commend Chief McLaughlin for this. You know, when we, when we built Station Three, they purposely left out the end of the exhaust system with the idea that there was money out there to be had and that we could make it compatible with the one that we have at Station One. So this grants come in, so we'll be able to do that work without having to spend our own money.
Paul, where are we having the safer grants?
Uh, we should know in September. The other thing is, once again, Locust Drive, unfortunately, there was a fire on Locust Drive. This is up where the connection on the Manor Way. When that fire, when those fire trucks were there, there was no way in or out from the bottom of that hill. So we still don't know, that case hasn't been scheduled in Commonwealth Court, so I don't know what's happening there.
Anything anybody wants to see on the next agenda? Anybody have anything else they want to discuss? Have an executive session?
Yes.
You're adjourned.